Thanks for coming out to our meeting. Your meeting and ours. I'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Here.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Here.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Here.
Councilmember Scriffner?
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Thank you. Would you please stand for... Do we have an indication?
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you for coming.
Councilmembers, thanks for having me. Can we pray?
Yes.
Fathers, we come together tonight to do the business of the city, and really, Lord, your business. I'm reminded of the words of Jesus in the fifth chapter of John's Gospel when he says, "I do only what I see my Father doing." We stand in the recognition tonight, Lord, that there's a million good things we could do, and only a few good things that we should do. And so, we are asking for wisdom. We realize that we steward what does not belong to us. We love our city. We're passionate about it. It's beautiful, and we're so grateful for the way it's reopening and all that's being engendered economically, socially, structurally. We're so thankful. But tonight, Lord, we're grateful for these civic servants, and we ask for your wisdom, your insight, your knowledge, your grace, that we would make decisions wisely collectively for your honor. We ask these things in your name, Jesus. Amen. Ready, Salvo?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Making noise here. Thank you. Tom, you have something to amend the agenda?
Yes, I do. I'd like to add an item to the agenda based on a provision in the Brown Act that allows it. A matter came to our attention today that needs to be resolved tonight. It has to do with a claim against us. It's a very small claim, a very minor claim. I thought that Greg had the ability to approve that on his own without your consent. In fact, I have a resolution to that effect, but it was never adopted, apparently. The RMA has already settled the matter, and so we would like to add anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2 and E3 in closed session. It takes all of you to vote for that before we can put it on the agenda. So, the motion would be to add that item to the agenda.
Do I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor of the motion? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Let it show that we have added this item with the unanimous vote. All right, then. So, we will go into our consent agenda. These items are marked with an asterisk. They're considered routine and non-controversial by statute. And consent items to be considered first will be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If a comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the City Council concerning the item before action is taken. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. So, on our agenda, is there anyone in the audience who would like to see a consent agenda item removed for separate discussion? Council? Do you have a motion to approve consent as presented?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
All right.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Yes.
Councilmember Scriffner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a 5-0 vote to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Next item is our audience oral and written communications. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to bring something before the council that's not on our agenda this evening? All right, seeing none. We will go into our regular part of the meeting. City Clerks report.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, the City Council will need to appoint one member to the Toatchby Valley Recreation and Parks District Board to fill a vacancy created by Board Member Wesley Backus' resignation. The appointment will fill the remainder of a four-year term, which is to expire on February 2, 2025. We did receive one qualified applicant, Mary Ann Pichulo. She is here in the audience. If you wouldn't mind coming up to the podium, councilmembers, if you have any questions for her, or Mary Ann, if you have anything you'd like to state to them.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I know many of you. My name is Mary Ann Pichulo. I've lived in Toatchby for 27 years now. I came when the McDonald's was built over near Albertson's. I own and operate six McDonald's in Kern County. I raised my three children here. I was a single mom growing up, and they came up through the Parks and Rec Department. My son is a very good friend with Cory Torres. Let's see, what else? I have my bachelor's science degree in sports management, athletic administration from St. John's University, and it's always been a dream job of mine to be involved in the Parks and Rec. Although I'm busy as a business owner, I do have time to commit to the city of Toatchby and to the youth to help them keep busy and have fun here in Toatchby.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Well, you're superwoman. I could just call you superwoman.
No, I just want to appreciate everything you... Because I know you're always supporting a lot of the youth groups and all the sporting activities. I appreciate you, what you've done for our city so far, and in order to you continue to serve.
Any other board comments? Would you like to make that motion, too?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion that we appoint Mary Ann to the member of the Toatchby Valley Recreation Parks District Board to complete the term to expire February 2, 2025.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Definitely.
Councilmember Scriffner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, and congratulations. We really thank you for stepping up, and, you know, it's not easy on these boards. It might be something that, you know... But it's your time and effort, and we just look forward to having you, you know, participate and add your knowledge to the process.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
All right, similar to our last item, we also have three members we will need to appoint to the Toatchby Planning Commission. This is due to an expiration of their terms, which will expire on June 30. The new term will expire on June 30, 2025. We did receive three applications, and again, we have three positions. So, from Steve Hamblin, Darryl Christensen, and Charles White. All three are in the audience. If you guys want to come up in that order. Steve?
Good evening.
Good evening. Mayor Smith and councilmembers, it wasn't too many months ago that we just recently met, so I've been serving on the Planning Commission for the last eight months. A big thank you to city staff and to fellow planning commissioners for beating me up to speed during that time, and I would love to continue serving in that capacity. We have to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Darryl?
Thanks, Mayor. Mayor Smith, councilmembers, I definitely appreciate you entertaining me standing up here today to continue to serve the community. When I stood up here, I think about eight years ago, maybe 10 years ago, I came up with a line that I thought, and I kind of choose you, but I'll say it anyhow. I still think we have the best days coming. Look at where Toatchby has been since I moved here in '06. It's not my hometown. I consider it my hometown. I would love to continue to serve for the Planning Commission. Thank you, guys.
Any questions? Thank you.
And Charles White?
I want to thank the council members who have supported me in the past for the Planning Commission. I think I've been serving 13 years. I've been the chairperson several times for two-to-three-year terms. I was chairperson during the Walmart EIR and application, and we all know that's probably the biggest thing that's hit the Planning Commission ever. And of course, we have the Sage Ranch coming up, which we're already beginning to learn a little about, and I just would like to continue to serve on the Planning Commission.
Any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Can we get nominations?
All right. Do they want it at a time or as a slate, or...
Well, you can do all the nominations.
I'll nominate the slate.
All right, we have a nomination of all three members.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Yes.
Councilmember Scriffner?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for serving. Seems like we've always been on the threshold of a growth era again, but here we go again. So, thank you for what you do for your community. Thanks again. Thank you. All right. All right. Director of Finance reports.
RSI Petroleum?
Mayor Smith, I need to recuse myself because I'm an employee of RSI Petroleum.
All right. All right. This is to authorize payments for RSI Petroleum. Are there any comments from the public? From the council? Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pogankord?
Yes.
Councilmember Scriffner?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It's a 4-0 vote to authorize the disbursements and bills for RSI Petroleum with a recusal from Mayor Pro Tim Davies.
Thank you. Our next item is our community engagement director.
Key? Good evening, Mayor Smith, councilmembers. What I've got before you tonight, we finally are ready to launch the Toatchby Beautiful Program. The signage is done. Thanks to Don and his team at Public Works, they were able to customize the sign and make it so it would look, I think, very nice in a yard. And what we've got, earlier this year, the council approved this program, so we moved forward, designed something we thought was nice, that people would be proud of to put in their yard. And what we're going to do, beginning July 1, is allow community members to nominate properties within the city of Toatchby. And we'd like to recognize those homeowners for the hard work they put in on their properties. And the nominations received are going to come from the community. They'll be judged based on landscaping, exterior appearance from the street, general maintenance, design, and innovation. And the judges will be comprised of Mayor Smith, Mayor Pro Tim Michael Davies, and city staff. And we'll review the nominated properties, and if those are worthy from those categories, they will receive one of these nice awards. And, excuse me, sorry. And if there's any questions, happy to answer, but we're really excited about putting this together after we did the Christmas decorations, the holiday decorations, the success of that. We're hoping that this will also generate some positivity. Let everyone else see it, too.
Key, how long will those signs stay up, when and after they're awarded?
We're looking as long as their property stays in nice, beautiful condition.
Good.
That's where it's going to stay.
Great idea.
Do you think this will help motivate those who have properties that need to be uplifted?
I think we certainly hope that that's one of the outcomes that'll come. But there's so many people that are working very hard to make, keep their properties, you know, that shining gem in the neighborhood. They need to be recognized, and maybe that'll motivate someone else. Absolutely, that's one of the positive things that'll come from this.
All right. I think it's a great program.
Me, too.
Greg, did you have a comment?
I do, thank you, Key. I think it could be the base for something far greater, quite frankly. Christina Scrivener and I, Councilmember Scrivener and I, talked about it, and she brought up beautiful Bakersfield. She had some great comments on how we could springboard this into potentially something far bigger. So, I'm all about all the suggestions, the comments. As far as I'm concerned, this is just a baby step into a much larger, something greater. So, I'm super excited. I want to thank everybody for maintaining their yards, first off, but if you maintain them at a superior level and/or you have a large investment, you know, you make it look better than it has been, we want to recognize that. And so, we're not going to hand these out like bubble gum, if you will. You really need to earn them, and we're looking forward to that day when we can start handing them out like bubble gum, because quite frankly, that means things are going really well. We have a beautiful city, and this is a small chance to make it just a little bit nicer. So, thank you to Key for all the work that he put into this and the council's support on this project.
I'd like to have a few extra people from the community rather than just council, you know, have like a panel, you know? That would be my preference, I don't know. What do you think?
I think that's a good idea, and I just think that helping to communicate the criteria so that everyone understands that there is a structure and it's a process. But I agree, Greg and I had a good conversation about this. I think that we want to reward what we want more of. We want to acknowledge it, and so this is a great step in that direction, and I get zero credit for this great project, but I do think that other cities have some other projects that are similar to this, that we can just, you know, copy what they do well and continue to grow it into something that's really exciting.
I'd like to see something on their webpage so somebody can nominate somebody, because your neighbors are the ones that's going to see the improvement more than we probably would, because we're not down in the neighborhood each day. But I think that would be a good thing that we can, you know, report on, and we're always asking the community to report the bad things, so maybe this is a change that we can report something good.
Yeah, absolutely. That's the plan, is to be able to launch it, so it's coming from the community. We'll compile that list, and then we'll take the judges out.
Yeah, I would prefer decline being one of the judges. Just, I think it should be community-based, just my own personal opinion. If you could get a few volunteers that would like to do that, I think that would be great.
Absolutely.
Perfect. We'll work on it. Okay. Super excited about it.
I'll bet we have a few people step up and say they'd be happy to do it. We'll put out a press release and talk about these different components and see what kind of feedback we get. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Key.
Assistant to the City Manager, report, Corey.
Good evening again.
Good evening again, Mayor Smith and councilmembers. The first item I have for you this evening is the annual CPI refuse collection rate adjustment. As you're aware, the city of Toatchby currently contracts with WM. They're actually rebranding. They're formerly known as Waste Management, because there's more to their world than waste these days. So, WM for refuse and recycling services. Our current agreement does allow them to request an annual rate adjustment in alignment with the percentage change of the CPI-U for water sewer and trash U.S. average for the 12-month period, which ends April 30. That's in Section 4.1 of our agreement. The Toatchby Municipal Code, Section 0804120, allows the City Council to approve a rate adjustment via resolution. Annually, Waste Management requests a rate adjustment consistent with the CPI-U. This year, the request for WM's rate is 3.35%. As a result, the entire rate increase proposal from WM is listed below. Additional documentation on formula for calculating the rate based on the CPI-U adjustment is attached to the agenda. Here are a few on the staff report, or a few of the most commonly billed services, their proposed rate changes. So, for example, currently, the 96-gallon trash cart would go from $17.03 to $17.60 a month, so right along the $0.57. There would be, the recycling is included in that per our resolution, so there's no change there. But then also, if you're ordering an additional cart, since the service is less, so that you would have a smaller increase there. The same goes for commercial, and then it kind of goes up based on the amount of service a business has. The fiscal impact for this, most of these services are billed by the city, with all the revenues less than 10%, including our franchise agreement, being paid to WM for their services. I know it was brought up earlier about ongoing service issues with Waste Management, WM. We have been working through that for quite a long time, and every time we find a solution, there's always something else, another challenge pops up. I'm fairly confident, though, we did have a meeting about a month ago after some pretty big service issues, and we found out based on a lot of what, you know, the data that they took, some of that stuff wasn't, there wasn't a missed pickup. It was a resident just left, didn't have their can out in time, and then they tried to call and say, "Oh, they missed me." And they weren't utilizing their technology that they had on their trucks to confirm that as well. So, there's a lot of that, and there were just some flat-out misses, driver training, staffing issues. So, we have also integrated our request tracker program. So, instead of somebody necessarily always calling City Hall, and then we are emailing us, we used to forward the emails, and then it would sit at somebody's desk at Waste Management for a week, and nothing would happen. We've now, since in the last couple of months, put in a request tracker system at their actual request. So, our city system is now helping monitor those. So, if we get a missed pickup request, that goes to WM, they can take a look at their cameras to see if they in fact didn't miss it, and if they did, they have to respond to that request. Or we get an email, and they get an email that says, "Hey, this thing is still sitting here with no action." And so, that has helped significantly as far as accountability goes. Since our meeting about a month and change ago, very few reported as far as missed pickups go. There's been some broken cans because they did use the old bins carts. Those will be cycling out as the state has new requirements for trash and recycling containers, so they have to be color-coded and that sort of thing. So, there will be some new branded WM stuff being, you know, put out to the city in the next couple of years, and that'll help with some of these missed pickups, and the cans actually fit in the claws. I mean, somehow they end up in the truck sometimes. Don't ask me how, but that happens, and those have been a lot of our requests. So, we've also sped up the service time for that. We've been pretty good with about 24 hours now of getting bins out to either new customers or those that have had damage. So, certainly it's not been without its challenges. We talked a little bit in the budget meeting about that as well, with crediting back some folks on their accounts in the past. We haven't really had to do that a lot lately. So, I'm optimistic about where we're going with this next round of service and getting the local team sort of pushed and dedicated to quality. They have done a lot of work recently. Our slurry seal project, which starts this week, it will impact trash and recycling, but they're actually bringing an extra driver up to service certain streets early, so they can get the slurry down and cured before people come back from work. So, there's some things like that. So, we've really opened up the communication and been able to deal with some of those issues. So, you know, this is part of their contract to have the CPI-U. Obviously, it costs more to deliver services these days, especially when you've got labor involved, as they do. So, like I said, most of this stuff, most of this revenue, less than 10%, is going back to WM for their services. And so, at this time, we recommend, per Toatchby Municipal Code, Section 0804120, the council adopt a resolution approving the requested refuse collection rate adjustment. We have to answer any questions.
Thank you, Corey. Are there any questions from the public? From the council?
Yes. I don't usually play the devil's advocate, but this is ridiculous. I served as mayor until January, when Mr. Smith took over, and my biggest call is about garbage. And I have to admit that I'm probably the only person in Toatchby that gets their garbage picked up. Maybe they think I'm still mayor. I don't know. But I don't...
Now, Mr. Smith has had his recycling miss consistently, and I said, "At least you pick up the mayor's house," but, yeah.
But they're always late picking up the recycling. I can't bring it in till the next morning usually, because they don't pick it up till 10 o'clock at night or whatever. But I get calls constantly, and I don't understand. I used to listen to all these complaints. I've lived here almost 21 years, and I would listen to all the complaints about bins. I put my can out on Tuesdays, and bins emptied it, and I brought it back in. I never had a problem. But this is so widespread that I really have to question, are we really being able to solve this problem through the things they suggested? I'm not in favor of giving them a dime until they can prove to us that they really can do what they said they would do in our agreement.
Yeah, I wish someone from WM would have been here this afternoon or this evening, for sure, but I know that they have in the last several, last month. It's been good. We've been on the show before. We'll have a meeting, and we'll schedule something, and it'll work out well for the next few weeks, and then it'll kind of fall off. We haven't seen that sort of tailing off. At least, the service has been very consistent. We encourage, too, a lot of, you know, we'll hear about service issues, but they're never reported. So, if they're calling you, for example, and not calling the city, or calling WM or putting out a request...
Then call me.
We don't know about it.
That's true.
Yeah, we're not hearing about it. The service times have certainly been something, I made it very clear, we need by, let's say, 5:30, 6 o'clock, when most people return home from work traditionally, those cans should be empty. They should not be. And so, they were working on some staffing to make sure. There were some training involved, you know, every time you train somebody. We have some challenges with alleys, some places, some places service off the alley, some are serviced, you know, off the street front, and so there have been some training issues with what they want to do it safely and correctly and not rush to the route to get it done in a certain amount of time. But, yeah, all those points are extremely valid, and I'll look forward.
The only people, they're not people, who enjoy this are the resident ravens.
Well, that was, yeah.
Terrible mess.
That was part of the conversation we had with the broken lids, which happens, because they come off the truck, they fall, and those are older, they hit right on the hinge, and they'll break the lid off. And so, in our last meeting, they actually did say, "Well, industry standard is we'll replace that the next service day." And I said, "Well, that's not going to work up here. A, we have wind, and then we have the crows that love to tear bags open." So, they've actually been able to service those within a 24-hour period and come back and pick it up the next day with stuff in it or without. And so, some of the benefits, and this is, it's hard to bring this up because it's not something that a customer necessarily sees, but with all the new regulations from the state of California, CalRecycle, I mean, we have to report every piece of trash that goes into the landfill or is diverted from the landfill. There's new programs, SB 1383, we've talked about organics. There's a million different things. It's all got to be record-kept, and there's transitions, and, you know, they're extremely helpful in that world, because they are a big corporation that does this. When it comes to recycling, I know right now in our last meeting that we had with Waste Management and CalRecycle, there was, there's a kind of a glut in the recycling market nationwide, because China stopped taking our garbage. They basically, too many suppliers were shipping over trash to China when they were supposed to send them recyclable material. So, China just stopped, and they got very selective, which left a lot of haulers with yards full of material that they couldn't find a buyer for. So, the benefit of having a large corporation is not only can they find buyers, but they no longer ship any recycled material to China. It's all recycled inside the U.S. So, there's a few advantages there. It's hard to tell the ratepayer who's not, who's having a missed pickup that, "Well, at least they're handling the regulations well," totally get that. But there are some advantages to having, you know, this group and the professional experience that they bring in a lot of those categories. And so, as far as the boots-on-the-ground service, we're certainly working on that and continue to push them to get better, and we have explored additional options in our franchise agreement to potentially exercise a 10-year clause. We have a 10-year sunsetting clause, and we have to basically change our franchise agreement that would start that clock to basically, you know, a decade from now, potentially getting a new hauler. But that was a provision they inherited from the bin sanitation agreement. So, we looked into that a little bit as well, as well as a performance clause. But the city manager is actually the arbitrator for any disagreements with the ratepayer and Waste Management, so there's potential that we can, you know, just withhold payment, and just withhold payment, and we have in the past, it just hasn't had some, we have to do a lot lately. So they've made some changes staff-wise and all that good stuff to promoting different folks and trying to put better people in the positions to make, you know, make sure the service, the basic services are handled, so.
Well, a famous old politician friend of mine once said, "Not all bureaucrats work for the government." And when you're trying to deal with a very large bureaucracy within that organization, and they tend to want to say what they think you want to hear anyways.
So it sounds like you've got a handle on it at the moment. Maybe we could have a little report card, either monthly or quarterly, see the call rate for the issues so that we're aware.
Yeah, and it certainly has helped. I know a lot of the calls recently, we've mentioned to them because there is technology in the cameras now to know. They can go by your house and that, there's a kind of a curbside camera, and if there's nothing there, they've got GPS. You know, we've had a, we had a business that said, "Oh, I haven't been emptied in three weeks," and we sent them that complaint, and they said, "Here's the video from yesterday of us emptying this dumpster." So they have, so they're finally getting that technology on board, so we've let a lot of callers out there, but no, okay, we're going to send this by for their, now they're going to review it in their GPS and their camera system and let you know, and a lot of them at that point just hang up because the technology is out there now. So that's certainly helped with some of the accountability and, but there are still issues, there are still misses, there are still late-night pickups and things that we're trying to work through. So yes, I have a handle on it for now, and we're trying to keep it that way, so.
I think it's not just Waste Management. I think you have to have buy-in from the community. I came, I went to Boise, Idaho just recently last week. I had to look for trash. I found two pieces in four days, and there's got, and guess who was servicing them?
Waste Management.
Yeah. I've been over to Europe, Croatia, the same thing. I had to look for papers. I found two pieces, same thing. Who's servicing them? This place, Waste Management is all over the place. So there's something missing when you have places that are entirely spotless.
Some of that's local, you know, local stuff too.
Right, so that's what I was saying. We need some buy-in somewhere from our community.
Yeah, the, we did talk in the budget meeting about the refuse, the Prop 218 that went through with the county of current for land use fee that adds another 57 or so thousand to the refuse for those types of programs, whether it's to mitigate illegal dumping, which we don't have a ton of in the city limits, but it's to help manage the roadways and other areas just for litter. So those things can certainly be, with a few more resources, those will certainly be increased in the years to come for sure.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
I have.
Me.
Yes.
You do not have to act on this this evening. To say that I am disappointed that Waste Management is not here is an understatement. They're asking for a raise in a time where we have had so many complaints, I couldn't even start to tell you. Some legitimate, some maybe not. We can table this, we can ask Waste Management to come here and recommit to this council and to the city the superior service that they sold to us three years ago when we gave them the beautiful contract that we did, transferring over the bins product to Waste Management. So you do have options. This is on the agenda tonight because they asked to have it on the agenda.
All right. What's the pleasure of the council?
Oh, that we table up.
All right, second. Do we need a vote or just consensus?
You as the mayor can table it if you have no objection from the rest of the town.
All right, we will table this until we actually have a person from Waste Management, and that's without objection, and I'll table it for now. That should at least get their attention to please come and talk to us, you know? Fair enough, we won't hurt them, we really, we want, tell them when we want them to be successful in our beautiful city.
Okay. Mr. Council is truly correct. Waste management in the state of California, not the corporation, but actually managing waste, is very complex, very bureaucratic. Kudos to WM for assisting us. Except at the end of the day, the citizens want the trash picked up, the curbs and gutters cleaned, puddles filled, and the street lights on. It's a pretty simple equation, and we're failing them in this particular area call.
All right, you'll let them know our wishes then?
My pleasure.
Thank you, Corey.
All right. Next item on the agenda?
All right, the next item is a first reading of the introduction of an ordinance adding regulations and requirements for operating short-term vacation rentals in the city of Tehachapi. As the city continues to draw tourism attention due to our proximity to outdoor adventures, we now have an established ABA for our local wine industry, hosts a lot of special events that draw thousands of visitors. The potential now for those short-term vacation rentals that utilize single-family housing for a hotel-like vacation stay could be an attractive option for property owners and visitors alike. I want to talk about these, I'm referring to these regular companies, Airbnb, VRBO, Turnkey, HomeAway, and even some of the larger hotel sites now like Hotels.com, Booking.com. They book those almost like hotels. You can list your home sort of Airbnb on those websites now. So we certainly support this as a business practice, but also understand there's a need to regulate these potential short-term vacation rentals to help protect our quality of life, safety, and zoning standards currently in place. While staff is unaware of any active short-term rentals in the city, we have prepared and are inducing the attached ordinance, a summary which was published in the attached news on June 16, 2021, to ensure we're prepared for that potential business practice. The, and there has been some stories across different cities in California that waited to regulate them after it was already a problem. So our hope is to sort of plan ahead and maybe expect to see this wave coming, and let's get these regulated and have some regulations in place. So the proposed language suggests regulations and permitting requirements for a home or property owner wishing to operate a short-term vacation rental. This includes a building code inspection, a business tax certificate, like the requirements in place for local hotels. Many cities across the nation have been inundated with those, as I mentioned, and they negatively impact single-family neighborhoods due to lack of regulations and accountability for property owners and vacation tenants. Also, in regulating the practice, in order to be as consistent as possible with the business landscape, transient occupancy tax or a hotel tax is currently charged on hotels in the city. The Muni Code requires any lodging place offering lodging for five or more people for less than 30 days be required to pay transient occupancy tax to the city equal to 8% of the nightly rate. To that end, the ordinance points out that those short-term rentals with two or more bedrooms are deemed to be offering lodging to five or more persons and be subject to a transient occupancy tax payable to the city of Tehachapi as well. The ordinance also seeks to protect single-family neighborhoods with the ability to revoke a business tax certificate for a short-term vacation rental that violates the regulations or are contacted by the Tehachapi Police Department for violations of the Muni Code. This ordinance only applies to short-term vacation rentals that offer stays for less than 30 days at a time. So there, no provisions of this ordinance apply to other forms of rental housing. If you've got an annual lease and that sort of thing, these are for short-term vacation rentals that by definition offer stays for less than 30 days at a time. So the fiscal impact is kind of unknown at this time. We don't have any that we're aware of. There are not expectations for collecting additional revenue currently, but the intent of the ordinance is to regulate this potential business practice, protect quality of life, and the expected peace and tranquility of our single-family housing areas while respecting the ability for short-term vacation rentals to exist. Tonight, this was the first introduction of the ordinance, and so there's no vote required at this time. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the public? From the council?
I just appreciate getting ahead of this. It is going to be something we're going to want to have controls in place to monitor and not chase after it becomes an issue. I never want to levy burdensome fine fees or regulations to anybody that's just trying to help pay for their property, but I think that we would be remiss not to think that with your stated citing of all the activity in Tehachapi with events, our wineries, I think that it's going to be a destination for folks to get out of the city and come up here, and we're going to see more Airbnbs.
Yeah, I've used them in the past. I'm one of those people that when I go to these things, I feel like I'm in somebody's home. So I want to make sure I leave it clean, I'm respectful of the neighbors.
You want a good star rating.
Yeah, right, exactly. Now, they do rate tenants, so that actually helps now because of the problems with renters that have just gone in and abused the place like it was a hotel room and, you know, somebody's home or, and so, yeah, I certainly appreciate that. We were trying to just sort of get this in place in case this sort of potential comes, you know, as it becomes more attractive for tourism.
And I understand that we're using a similar language and process as other cities, so we're not, we're not doing anything extraordinary. We're just protecting ourselves, considering our constituencies, and mitigating issues that would be bad. But I agree with you. I think the market pressures in many ways take care of some of the issues we could experience, but I think it's smart to make sure that folks are on notice, that they can't just do whatever.
And it puts, it puts short-term vacation rentals and hotels on the even playing field because hotels are having to charge at 8%. Now, not all of our short-term rentals will charge it because of our five or more persons provision, which Tom and I both tried to figure out why that was put in there 60-some-odd years ago, we're still not sure. But we think it might have to do with farm labor actually, because Tehachapi and both Arben had similar provisions, and we think maybe because of the history of both communities and farming that that was so people could, you know, rent their room and not be paid for, paying hotel taxes. But nonetheless, we, yeah, we definitely wanted to get that and put them on a level playing field with the hotels because they are having to pay TOT, they do have that business license, they're subject to certain inspections, life safety. So we thought it was only fair to keep them on the same playing field as that business as well, so.
All right.
Mayor, can we get a vote for, to approve the reading and first introduction?
We're still on.
On this item?
Yes. All right. Is there any more discussion on it? Okay. I'll enter, on item 10 you're talking about, Greg?
Yes.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the first reading and introduction of an ordinance adding chapter 8.68 to title 8, attached municipal code to regulate short-term rentals?
Mr. Mayor, could you read the ordinance title, or you want me to do that?
Go ahead.
It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Tehachapi adding a new chapter 8.68 to title 8 of the Tehachapi municipal code to regulate short-term rentals.
I'll make that motion as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm sorry, we should have had a roll call vote. Why don't you go ahead and do that? I'll leave it to you.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Pokenkord?
Yes.
Councilmember Skripner?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Davies?
Yes.
Mayor Smith?
Yes.
It was a 5-0 vote to approve the first reading and introduction of an ordinance adding chapters 8.68 to title 8 of the Tehachapi municipal code to regulate short-term rentals.
Thank you, Ashley. All right. And thank you, Corey. Yeah, I think it's real important, just like Christina was stating, especially with the noise of parking, because that's when things get out of hand right there. And if you're ahead of it, then you have a way to say you're out of bounds. You can't do that. And come back in six months, we'll see if you want to reapply for whatever it is. Okay. All right, thanks again. Next item is... City managers report. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. Couple items for you this evening. I want to thank all of the business owners and residents, city and county-wide, for coming out to our grand reopening celebration. Last Tuesday, we had over 55 businesses that participated and probably close to 200 people with a lot of positive press, whether it was print media, social media, or television. So thank you for everyone coming out and super excited about putting the public behind us and moving forward. Also want to remind everybody that the city of Tehachapi is planning a grand Independence Day celebration on July 4th, capped by, of course, the bat balls and fireworks lit off at the airport starting at 9 o'clock, but we have a couple bands and some food booths and different things in Central Park, along with TVR PD. They have a 5K and a 10K room, so encourage folks to come out and, and after you watch the fireworks, you know, take a deep breath and don't get caught in a traffic jam, and just do the right thing and be a good neighbor. Thank you for that. Also, High Speed Rail notified me today that the environmental impact report for the Bakersfield to Palmdale section will be hitting the streets on 25 June. So you can go to their website, hsr.ca.gov, and review the environmental impact report. I'm sure it's thousands and thousands of pages deep. We will also pin that to our website, but I encourage folks to do what they can, learn what they can about this particular project. Love it or hate it, the public process is there for you to utilize. So 25 June. We talked earlier about slurry sealing some streets, city streets and roads. So starting today, Monday, going through next Monday, seven days, we will be slurry sealing streets with an oil coat, protecting and enhancing the longevity of the asphalt. So we appreciate everybody's patience and moving forward on that project. So very excited about that. And then also, as mentioned earlier, we started our Snyder Avenue project, so complete rebuild on Snyder Avenue from Tehachapi Boulevard up to Valley on the south end. Some new curb, gutter sidewalk, and asphalt later this summer. So really excited about that, and it started also today. So be safe out there, be cautious, and be courteous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Councilmember reports. Christina?
Yeah, just a quick thing. I just want to, I want my, my family would like to adopt a flag in advance of the 4th of July holiday. I just want to encourage others to consider doing the same. Excited to celebrate the reopening of our city and our great country, and I think that it's a hopeful, hopeful time.
Thank you, Christine. Michael?
Yeah, I just wanted to, we had a great time when we had the reopening. That was a lot of positive things, a lot of good people there. Just a lot of positive comments. Appreciate everybody still maintaining their distance and wearing masks when they need to, and if they feel sick, they need to stay home. I have enough sanitizer in my body I think it will last me for the rest of my life. But I think we just need to do the good neighbor. We just need to, if we're not feeling well, I think we just need to stay home. I had a big meeting with all my employees, you know, I just, I don't need anybody getting sick and passing it on. I think it's something that we've always should have been doing, you know, washing our hands, and I think, just appreciate the public doing that. And I appreciate that we're back open, and let's just continue to move forward.
Absolutely. Don't let up. Sisam?
I just want to add my excitement for the reopening. I had so much fun. We were hugging everybody and talking 100 miles an hour, and it was wonderful. And then at 5 o'clock that evening, we went to the EDC open house to reopen the visitor's center. Same thing, just, just talk, 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 talk. You know how us women are. And it was just wonderful to be able to say, "We're back." So thank you.
Thank you. John?
She took my little thing about the mixer.
That's okay, go ahead and answer it.
Because I said, "Greg did a great job except for he forgot about the mixer," but anyway, there you go. And it's great to see the repaving or the slurry or whatever you, shelly, sherry, whatever it is. Anyway, every, every time I turn down the street, there's the, the little road stops and so on and so forth. Also, the mask thing, there are several businesses that still would prefer us to wear masks, and I asked at several places, and they said, "Yeah, we would rather wear masks, so be ready for that as well." So, anyway.
Thank you.
That's about it.
All right. Just did what everyone else said, and especially with the, the event that we had for the businesses was really well-attended, and I think they thought it was pretty neat that we did that, so.
He has special things to keep out. He's really well beyond the call of duty, as he always does.
I've decided he doesn't sleep. He's got a little finger in everything, so I don't know how he does it, but every time he turns around, he's doing something. So, yeah, God love him.
All right. We will now adjourn to closed session at City Hall.
We can go, Greg.